Good evening, good evening. Welcome to Pine Love School District. Office twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-four, morning. By my count, we have a board, we have directors Whitmore, and directors Edwards, and directors Colachi. This is at this time, so I want to say good evening to everybody. It seems like it's been awhile since we've been back together, I don't know. Maybe it's been a hundred degree days or something, I don't know. But it seems like it's been awhile, so I want to welcome you to our board meeting this evening, and want to thank you for attending. Want to give a shout out to Zebra Land, Zoom Land, or Facebook Land, so thank you for setting that up. We've been had a lot of contact with different classes who are now starting to galvanize their support and wanting to support our district going forward. So we'll be providing some details about that. And again, I always want to thank our superintendent for serving in our district. I want to thank the board, we're still a professional purpose and force. You hold us accountable, we want to always try to do the best job we can. With our main goal, our only priority, being student success. And so, thank you again for attending. It's good to see some Pine Love school district staff. I'm sure they'll be presenting or speaking this evening. At this time, now that we've established a board, we're gonna stand for a moment of silence. Tonight's moment of silence will be for our community, for those impacted by violence in our community. We still ask for a moment of silence for our young people, for our first responders, for our leadership, for our teachers, for our staff, our counselors, and those who have to work with our students and our community who are undergoing trauma. So at this time, we're gonna stand for a moment of silence. After the moment of silence, we're gonna do the pledge, and we're gonna continue with our agenda. Thank you. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, at this time, we're gonna have a small adjustment to our agenda. We want to move our special recognitions up to the beginning of this meeting and to our meetings going forward. Because we, you know, parents are here, we want to get our recognition done. We know students have to get home and do homework, and be ready for tomorrow. And parents need some rest. And so, we appreciate them coming out to support our students. So we're gonna be doing that going forward. I also would like to say to the board that I'm going to request that we have some flexibility with our meeting schedule this year. I know in times past, we've set the meeting schedule for the whole year on the same date at the same time. I'm going to ask for some flexibility. Because we sometimes have changes in schedules. I want to make sure we always have a board. Things happen, you know, we also have families, we also have responsibilities. We continue to try to take care of the business of the district. But I'm gonna be asking for some flexibility with that and working through the superintendent's office in that regard. I think that's where we got with that. All right, so at this time?
Yes, I'm excited. So we talked about special recognitions, but I'd like to really think about it to the board. I want to share this with you. Our faculty went through some very intense two-day training this summer. And it's called capturing kids' hearts. And one of the things that we learned through capturing kids' hearts is how we do like welcomes during the day and how different things happen. And so, one of the things that we talked about that we want, we encourage our teachers and our students to do during every class period is share good things. And so, we always do sharing our stripes and talk about how in our district, those that are students that show their stripes, those that are educators that show their stripes, and then community members that are showing their stripes. But I'd also like to start using the language "good things" because I'd like to share the good things that we want to recognize this month for our board. And so, we have some special good things to share. And I'm asking Mr. Carl to come help with that. So in regards to the student recognitions, the board, I know that you guys, we talked about it at the last meeting, but I will share, you know, with us getting back to school early and starting the new calendar, we had what we call our district convocation. And so, very convocation was August twenty-fourth summer. And we were able to really lean in on our students for their support and their help through this. And so, I want to share the good things that we have this year with our convocation by being able to include our students in part of that. So we want to recognize them for their support and their help that they did during convocation. We got students?
Yes, so kind of shifting through these to make sure I'm calling students. So if you are not a student, then you're seen. So first person is Kamaya Christopher, presenting the color guard during our convocation. Makaya McLeod. Another color guard, Harris Park. All right. Another color guard.
And this is the commander.
Yes.
Miss Humphrey.
Still want to recognize those names. Leading the staff in the pledge of allegiance, Hunter Wright.
Thank you for showing your stripes and helping us. That was much synergy. You all turn this way, look at Mama. They had a little bit of help.
Serenity Jones. Hayden Bullard, singing a duet, "A Heart Is A House For Love." Danny Johnson Jr., also sang a duet. Adam Price, our guest speaker, who did a wonderful job. And these students were behind the scene. Haylen Dunbar helping with the setup, see here? Okay, part of the football team as well. Xavier Smith, Xavier Smith not here. Jaden Sanders, not here, okay, all set up. Marshawn Jordan.
I stay in football practice.
Provontae Wallace, setting those chairs. Tavion Lewis. All right, that is it for our students.
So thank you. Thank you, Adam. So our staff awards. I kind of do. So this was really special one. I really believe, I really believe that we don't get to recognize everybody as much. And I mentioned it last week, but by the change in our, not last week, last month, by the change in our calendar, we also realized that we shortened our summer for students, but we also shortened our summer for our custodial staff and our maintenance staff that had to come in and make sure that everything's ready for the school year. They worked so much over these last few months, and they worked. I said, "Well, I really need them to be at this certain training one day." And Mr. Gordon, the lead of our custodians, said, "Well." I said, "Can we have them come in on the weekend and work on that?" He said, "No, Dr. Love, we're already working all the weekends because we're trying to get everything ready." So they worked seven days a week, some weeks, trying to make sure that our buildings are ready for our students. And so, we're so proud. So I'd like to say thank you to our custodial staff, but certainly to Mr. Patrick Gordon. Can't imagine, he makes miracles happen. He really did, so I just want to say thank you so much. Stay right here for just a second. And then the other person that was very integral to many things that we know were in a very technology world, and everything had to be moved from one building to another. We had to have smart boards set up. We had to make sure that we had all the internet connection and everything. So we'd like to really say thank you so much and recognize Mr. Brandon Sims, our head of technology.
Thank you for the outlets.
And you want to share? I think that he's also working to where we have the volume better and all the cameras will be working for the next month. But we do have outlets up for him now, so. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And when this summer, when we did do this, all of our training, we had the two-day training that we talked about that was capturing kids' hearts, we had over, oh gosh, well, the whole staff. So we had eight sites where we trained over fifty people at each site. And of course, we know we don't have that many sites in our district. So we utilized different places in the community. And many churches stepped up and gave tours for free. We, of course, were able to use all the places, our local educational cooperative. And so, we wouldn't have been able to train everyone without the support of the community. So we really want to recognize those churches and the people in the community that gave us the opportunity to be able to train our staff, so.
Yes, they literally opened the doors of the church. So we appreciate it. First up, we have Reverend Derek Easter, St. Hertha. Next, from Freedom Center at New Life Church, Mr. Clarence Davis. All right, Rose Hill Missionary Baptist Church, Reverend Clarence Holman. Arkansas River Educational Service, this isn't church. Feels like a church sometimes, but we have Mr. Mike Walker representing.
We need four rooms in your building. Thank you so much.
All right, First Methodist Church, Reverend Carlton Cross. Pine Love First Assembly, Pastor Kevin DeYoung. Oh, Kevin DeYoung.
And that was fun, we did our convocation at his church. And so, the technology, I think you spoiled Mr. Sims with the technology you guys had there.
And University of Pine Love, Rose Marie. Board lab, that's where you, that's not the first.
Oh, good, okay. Thank you so much. If it's, yes, sure. Thank you so much for everything. We couldn't do this without our community. Yes, I saw too, I see, yeah. Come on up, you want to sing on your way up here? Were y'all in football practice?
They let you out of football practice? We'll tell them we haven't seen you.
All right. Again, we'll clap again for Kayden Bullard, he has a beautiful voice. And I think they had what, did y'all have like maybe one day to prepare? Because we switched it up. Twelve hours? Two hours? Thank you so much. Oh. You want to say "Rose Hill"? Of course. So thank you so much. And those that are here that were for our good things, our recognitions, you're welcome to stay for the board meeting, because you don't have to. So I'll give you permission to leave if you want. Thank you, Mr. Carl.
Okay, good. All right, moving on with our agenda. Now we're gonna move to the adoption of minutes. I think all directors celebrate from July twenty-second. Are there any questions, comments, concerns about those minutes before entertaining a motion to approve? At this time, I'd like to approve a motion. I'd like, I'm seeking a motion to approve the minutes on July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. Move the property second, ready for question? Any questions hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have it, thank you.
So next is your financial report. And so, what we did, I asked, so Jamie kind of switched it up just a little bit. We do like a records page, so it'd be easier to follow with the financial report. And so, you'll see the district reports and then the building project reports. Only thing I really want to call your attention to in the first, the first report with the board, what we call the board report period one of twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-five, we're still journaling expenditures, so this is not completely clean for this school year because we have until the end of this month to have everything ready and cleaned up. But I want you to look at the seven thousands, which is our activity accounts. Remember, we had all those unused activity accounts that we were trying to close out and clean up, and so, they're gone. So they're all closed out and cleaned up, and so, we have a clean activity account. So that was really, that was really nice to have on the board report to look through that. If you look at the ending balance of the board, the last page, which is page five of thirty-five, it shows we've received four million dollars this school year so far in revenue. And this is through federal and tax orders. On the next page, page six, this is our check register that's in e-finance. And I just want to also call your attention to a new process that Ms. Reed is working through with the business office. We have several, there's been on several occasions where you have outstanding checks. We're trying to clean up all those outstanding checks. So we have a new process. After sixty days, Mr. Shaw reaches out to those individuals that have that outstanding check to find out what's going on, why they may or may not have cashed that check. But after so much, after so many days, we're going ahead and voiding the check, and then the vendor will have to reissue a check so that we can clean it up if we haven't gotten in touch with the vendor.
So I thought it was something in the policy that a certain amount of time had to tunnel to state authority or something. That's not, basically, we weren't.
Well, we can, as long as we're still trying to find out where it's at, we can void that on this, but yes, it's still there. So then we can turn it over. Yes, that's accurate. So if you look, that, those check register keeps going. And then, we have the very back, which you're gonna see our, I'm trying to find the page. Page twenty-five, you start our, the checks for the month. But then, I wanted to show you, direct you to the building project. Just so that you'll be aware of what that report looks like.
Before you move on, Janet, I want to go back to the outstanding checks. Is there a way to determine? And there's so many, so it may not be a way to determine, you know, how many days per check that they're outstanding, kind of a running tally. Is there a way of trying to determine that? So if you, so if you have check number, I'll just say five-nine-eight-zero-six-six, and, you know, the check is sent on seven-one, is there a way to track to see how many days before it gets to sixty days? Or when it was cashed, is there a way to do that?
Yes, that's what they're doing now. So like this one that's, this one's a seven-twenty-five, that's when it was cut. And it, so that's how long we know it's been out. Because it hadn't cleared yet. So like this one, we cut this one on seven-ten, and it clears seven-ten. So they cashed that day. But like, that's where they're going back and looking to see what the last sixty days were. It's clean, it's a lot cleaner than it was. There were some outstanding checks from years ago that we probably didn't know. Yeah, that's good.
So this cancel column, those, all of those aren't been canceled, are they?
No, that just shows that it's, no.
They've been cashed.
Yes. Well, and not all, so you, where you see outstanding, those have not been cashed. So that cancel column, I don't even know why it's called cancel. What does it say cancel for, Ms. Reed? The amount that it cleared for, basically, the canceled amount is that column. So it's basically the amount it was issued before and then it's cleared. So they're all zeros.
And there were some that were zeros, and there were some that were actually the amount of the check. So those made sense, but I didn't understand the zeros.
You'll notice the columns that have zeros on the outstanding and the canceled, those are direct deposit. They have a check number, they start with a five, it's a payroll check. So those are just direct deposits, but they still have a warrant number of after number. And so, that's why that's on there. But it does not print the amount of the payroll check. No, that's good. Board group, oh, I just wanted to call your attention to page thirty-one of thirty-five. And so, that is the building project proceeds for fiscal year twenty-four. But at the very bottom, you'll see where that final is for the building project. So we have the bond proceeds that we got in fiscal year twenty-four, the total that we spent, the interest that was made, and what our ending balance is. So what you'll see on the next page is that ending balance starts in e-finance for this fiscal year as the beginning balance. And we just want to show you that we keep it reflected in both places. That's all, that's all the only one that I share with you is first time, but yeah, that's.
All right, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the financial report as presented. Move the property second, ready for question? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have it, thank you. All right, now we're moving on to board committee reports.
So I listed the five committees, but so if you want to go in that order, that's fine. And so, facilities.
Yes, good afternoon and morning, evening. I wanted to start off with a report from, he's already on the, I think that's what everyone wants to know about is progress on the new high schools. So I'm gonna let them start off with the report.
Evening, everyone. We wanted to do just a quick video, kind of show a little bit of the progress for anyone who may not have been by site recently, so. Just gonna take you through a little bit of overviews, showing actually some of our demo, some of their work as it started. Some quick still shots here, we're taking from a drone, obviously. Hardways up. Lost one of the screens.
Hang on one second, Sean.
Yep.
There we go. I want us to be able to see it this way too. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I can back it up, you'd like to see a little more of the demo first. If you kind of follow through here, you can see the individual buildings as they begin to go down. This is a little bit of work that we were doing. This was over against Olive Street, starting to do some of the storm range work. Over there, that's those northeast parking lots. As you'll see, we were beginning to bring in some of the fill. It's gonna help rein the building up out of the ground. This is kind of looking back through where the main courtyard would be. You're looking back towards McFadden, we're there just going out of screen around now. Kind of moving up around to the multipurpose building. And as we've completed the demo of a lot of the northern and central part of the campus, we're looking to, again, bring in additional dirt to get bringing the footings and foundations level up. We were able to, we did bring in a new water line to vacuum the multipurpose building. And it's actually fed from the north now. Where originally it was fed from the east. Back through underneath where the new building's going. So it has its own separate feed incoming from the north. Here, you'll kind of see a good view coming back in. That's Patterson Building, partially taken down. The academy over here. This is kind of a live shot of when the Patterson Building was being demoed and coming down. If you might have been by, we've got about twelve machines about that size out there taking down multiple buildings, working very quickly in south, bringing out salvage. This is kind of the final shot of Patterson before it came down. This is what it looks like today. If anyone's been over, just recently, McFadden Gym is now about halfway down. The roof has been brought down, the center of the building, all of that, the existing bleachers that were concrete have not been hammered out yet, but that'll be next. So what you saw in the dirt work and associated fill in that area represents about thirty-five thousand yards of dirt that has been brought in today to really bring up the center of the site. So you've probably seen a lot of trucks running around downtown area that belong to us. But it's been great. I know that everybody else wants the rain, but we love the dry. So as long as it stays dry, we keep moving quickly. So this has been, it's been a blessing to us. So from here, what I really wanted to do is talk about kind of our next milestones we have coming up. McFadden Gym demolition will be completed by about the week of September ninth. The McGeorge Building is coming down next, be there about mid-October. It will be demolished. The Trice Academy will come down following that. It will be finished by about the end of October range. The Trice Gym is going to stay up throughout the football season this year and the football season next year. It's being used as a visiting key locker room. So once we get the Trice Academy, our demo guys are gonna pull off site and we'll continue with our site work. The harding drain replacement that we've all talked so much about, we'll start, we'll start getting the large pieces of precast drain in September fifth. And so, you'll start to see that work happening when we'll start doing the replacement of the hardened drain. We are at a point where our concrete crews are just now getting site, starting to set up their layouts. We'll be starting footings on what will be the southeast corner of the building. So really, just off of the academy building itself. So we're gonna start right there, and we're gonna start working our way north, and then come back around this way and kind of build back out the box if you kind of remember the square shape of the existing school. And. So we kind of, as we think about all of this and all the changes and the construction traffic, one of the big keys we really have is the safety as we look to football season coming up. And so, we sat down and had a real extensive meetings with Mr. Grad and his staff, Pine Love coaching staff, who really worked with the district, what made sense from a district standpoint and how we can get people parked safely. We also met with the police department, fire, emergency management systems to get a good logistics plan going. So there are gonna be a few changes that you will notice as you're coming into football games this year. So there are gonna be a few changes that you will notice as you're coming into football games this year. And I want to take just a minute to kind of cover a few of those. Okay. So, um, as you're looking, this is looking from the south, we're from Eleventh Street. Uh, kind of in between where they're, the old McGeorge parking lot will be. We'll use a pointer over here on the main screen. This is Olive off to the side, right over here. We are looking to set up additional parking for the building, for the games, all pretty much to the north of the existing school and stadium. So this parking up here, uh, as you'll see, is over at A R E S C. The parking on both sides of that building, here and here, uh, the softball complex. There's also going to be parking located there. And that, those lots will be the primary parking, uh, for the games themselves. We are working with the police department to look at making Ninth Street and at Laurel, right through here, is gonna be a one-way traffic, uh, for a drop-off lane, uh, for those patrons who need to have a little closer access to the building itself. The lot right here, which was the, what's left of the northeast corner of the existing school parking lot, right here off Ninth, is going to be ADA parking only. Uh, this will be a controlled access gate. It will be coming in, uh, school personnel and security will be controlling those parking lots. So that if you need ADA parking, uh, coming in to the, to the school, or to the game, then that lot right there, we specifically designated for ADA. My understanding is that the school is also working with, um, to provide some shuttle service uh, from the northern lots as well for those that need assistance. This is, the intent is not to have a full shuttle for every student, but for those needing assistance, uh, they didn't want to make every effort to help with that. I'm gonna zoom in a little bit closer here, uh, kind of more towards the north entrance. So I'm turning your perspective around to the north side of the stadium, I apologize. But again, this is that Ninth Street with Laurel coming up here for a drop-off lane. Uh, that would be a controlled access point, so if you need to come in and drop off, uh, you know, patrons that need that service, uh, that will be the lane to do so. During the Friday night games, the high school games only, this won't affect the JV or sub grade at the high school games. The road in between here, uh, Eighth Street, in between Beach and Laurel will be shut down for safety and security reasons. Uh, that will help control the traffic in this area, as well as, uh, I know people tailgate over here on the hill, uh, and be able to have traffic going back and forth. The two main ticket booth entries will still be this southeast entry down here, uh, where it's always been. And right here on the northwest corner, right here on the northwest corner, the new ticket booth and restroom facility that was built about three years ago, that ticket booth will be open as well. So the tickets will be able to be taken on the northwest corner and the southeast corner of the building. There will still, you will still be able to travel around the north end zone, uh, on the sidewalk over here. And there will be travel around the south end zone as well, uh, coming from side to side of the stadium. So if you, no matter which side of the stadium you're coming in, wanting to get there, there will be access back. We are in the process of getting additional parking areas for, uh, the football players themselves, uh, right here just north of the multipurpose building. That will be, uh, a place that players and coaches only can park. This gate here, that means the beach will remain closed as it always is. What that will allow is for the emergency service vehicles to be to the west of the stadium. And the emergency service vehicles will also stage just to the southeast of the stadium. So the police and fire and EMS will all have a good presence there and be ready to activate as needed. The other area that we will be looking at, this is a further south view. What this will allow is over, an overflow parking space. So if it's to the north, it's all taken. There will be overflow parking here to the south of Eleventh Street. The very front of this lot will be coming off for visitor bus parking. So once the opposing team comes in, they can drop off cheerleaders and band, uh, up here at the stadium. Again, Trice Gym, this last building here, will be used for their locker room. So it's kind of creating a visiting team area over here to the far west. Uh, and we are providing a fenced air, uh, path for the visiting team to make it over to the stadium. They will come right through here, uh, again after the game. It will allow the visiting team, uh, cheerleaders and all to come back to this area and they will be loading out over here in a vis, a visiting team area and headed out from there. So that'll keep the visiting teams and home teams separated back in the process, they will be in a secure area. All, all access to and through the, the school will be shut off. So anyone parking in the south lot will need to come over to Olive and up and back in here on the north side of the construction site. There will be no access through the construction side, uh, for any of them. Were there anybody have any, any questions or concerns?
Yes?
Um, so can, the first question I have actually to pass to you with demolition of the buildings. Um, have you received any complaints about the dust being generated, the particulate matter being generated from the demolition from the community? Have you seen any complaints from the community about that?
We have not on site. To my knowledge, the district is not. We are working, uh, we've got a lot of water that we're using, especially it's just gotten dry, to help wet things down to keep dust to a very minimum, as much as possible.
I just saw a video, you know, that it was generating a lot of dust. And I did get a call from someone and I referred them to someone else, to, um, to, to address that or a matter. But if we can, if we're helping to implement some, uh, dust control methods, that's great to, or to be good neighbors for people who are over there, especially people who have sensitive, um, you know, respiratory issues and that particulate matter can, can start to aggravate those.
Yes, ma'am. We have worked with Liberty to get, uh, some construction, uh, taps for the fire hydrants there locally. And we are spraying not only the, the dust itself, to keep the dust down as our dirt is moving through, but also we're spraying the buildings as we're doing the demolition to help keep the, the dust down and that as well.
Okay.
Thanks a lot. Then we will end the report.
Student affairs?
All right, good evening. Ricky Whitmore. Uh, on August the fourth tenth, we had a, our very first student affairs committee meeting. Uh, and basically the responsibility, the primary responsibility of student affairs is to ensure that the parents and students are aware of the services and, uh, get what's needed for the students to succeed on their educational journeys. Now, there are already people that are in place, professionals that's in place within the district that's doing some great work. The only difference is with the committee, we have added, uh, board members to work alongside with those professionals that's already doing the work within the district. Now, I will say that there was a lot of things that I did not know that was going on. But I'm grateful to have been a part of the meeting. Uh, it was very informative. Uh, I was able to put, uh, faces with the names that I've heard, you know, since I've been up here on the pound. So moving forward, um, we have a lot of great things. I don't want to start naming people because I don't want to leave anybody out, but I see a few of the ladies in the back, uh, that was at the meeting. And what we plan to do is just do everything that we can so that our students are successful. That's primary in this district. Uh, now, I'm a big analogy person, so for those that are not, please forgive me, but I'm gonna say it. So what I was thinking of as I, uh, left the meeting is currently right now, in my truck, my check engine light is not on.
Okay.
But it's always good to have a mechanic, a good mechanic in your pocket when you need it. Because there's gonna come a time where that check engine light is gonna come on. I look at our good mechanics, our great mechanics, correction, as the women that I've met within this committee meeting, that is part of this district, already doing great work. So, our engines are our students. And there's gonna come a time where the check engine light is gonna come on. Whether it's a behavior issue or academic issue, we need to make sure that our great mechanics are taken care of. And that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna make sure that our professionals have what they need to be the best that they can be. So that's basically what the first meeting was about. To basically see who's in the district, what are they doing, and how can we be of assistance to those professionals that are already doing the work, so that our students can succeed. So moving forward, what we plan to do is to add a parent to the committee. Now, I am a parent, but I don't count as a parent. I'm counted as a board member. So we're gonna get somebody that I believe is not currently, uh, active in the district as a parent on the committee. That's the next steps. And also, we talked about potentially, um, a directory of some sort, and maybe even a video that we will, uh, produce so that the community, the parents, the students, will be able to go out and, and see who it is that they need to contact for specific things. And not basically get the runaround in the district. So if there's, for example, special needs concern, you know, you may be able to go to this directory or you may be able to go to this video and like, this is who you need to talk to. If it's something pertaining to mental health or bullying, for example, you know, this is the person that you need, you will need to talk to. So we're basically in the beginning of work today. Again, this was our first meeting, but I'm excited to see what is to come. You know, everything, uh, ran smoothly. And I do want to give another shout-out to the people in the district. A lot of them I see, several in the back, that are already doing great work. Again, these people have already been doing this work, and they're gonna continue to do the work. The only difference is we've incorporated some board members, and we're going to pick up a parent that's gonna come to help our students be successful, because it's about our students first. So that's where we are. And within the future, we'll be reporting again after some meetings. Thank you.
So Ms. Edwards normally chairs the academic affairs board meeting, but, uh, committee meeting. Does anyone want to talk, talk about it that was in the meeting, from the other day? Definitely. You may handle these early.
No, that's fine, sir. So we invited, um, Ms. Rawls, our director of curriculum instruction, and basically we walked through, um, the pacing guide with the board members that were on that committee, just to talk like, so, our district has ELA, math, science, pacing guides for every grade level across the district for each quarter, first, second, third, and fourth quarter. And so just accessing that on the website and showing where that was, and some of the feedback, of course, again, was how can we ensure that parents know these things, that they are understanding what the students are learning and, um, and are expected to be able to do by the end of that quarter? So some of the things that came out of that, that we were already gonna do, that Ms. Rawls shared, was that, um, we have a, a monthly newsletter that's gonna go home talking about exactly each core subject that that student would be doing. And then another thing that was brought up was at the secondary level, syllabus at each classroom. And so that would be something that, um, when I met, when we met with our lead teachers and talked about that at the secondary level, how we could be consistent with making sure in certain courses, we have a syllabus so that we can prepare students in that way. Um, we're also going to create videos and support in regards to how parents can access their students', um, texts and the different things that they're using to learn from on the Clever, um, app. Our students are all logged into Clever, which is where they can access all of their educational resources and support. But we realized that many parents don't know how to do, to gain that access. And so we're talking about doing some videos to put that out there on, um, on our Facebook page and things like that. So it gives parents an idea of where they need to go and how they need to do it. That came out of that committee. We looked at data. We looked at some of our data as well.
Good evening. The, um, financial affairs committee went on August twenty-first. Uh, we did review the proposed budget and tax levy and to approve the sample ballot. Uh, I deliver eleven A on the agenda tonight. Uh, we also looked over the cha, proposed changes from the superintendent for the, um, section seven policies, um, and recommending that we approve all of those except for seven point five, which deals with purchases, because, um, there were some changes that we were looking at trying to incorporate. And I did get those to Dr. Barbary today, so that we'll need to go through, uh, legal review and of course, back out to the committee to review as well. So we're asking that we approve all of the financial policy except for seven point five, um, tonight. And we also discussed, uh, the upcoming budget and a need to have a work session to really, uh, get all the board members on board with, uh, the budget for next fiscal year, uh, which, uh, we're expecting to have next month. So. I do also want to say, and I'm excited about the fact that we're, we're looking toward this for the budget, is that the, um, the bond revenue that was passed for the tax for the, for the new school will generate a certain amount of revenue, and there will be a bond payment. And so if there's any difference, which we are expecting some difference, between, between the revenue that we're expecting to generate from the sales, from the, I think I said, uh, from the, uh, property tax revenue and the bond payment, that, uh, we are working toward trying to create a reserve fund for the difference between that. So that it can be used toward, uh, building the reserves that we need to do capital improvements at our other schools. Because that's something that, you know, we have a need for that. We need, we need to be able to reserve some funding to address those needs in addition to what we, um, you know, want us to do with the new school. So, excited about that. And that concludes my report.
All right, as it relates to governance, governance, we didn't meet formally, but, uh, I just want to say that, uh, the board is constantly getting updates about trainings that are coming up. I think we got some information about, uh, the SBA board training on September the fifth, and encourage board members to attend. I would not be attending in person, but I think I'm registered to be attended by Zoom. And so so, Dr. Barbary, ensure that information. Also, just to remind board members to keep up with your service hours and the hours that you're accumulating, and try to participate in, in as much training as you can and hopefully. I don't know what a memo means, but I never liked it in a memo. I think it's nine.
Nine hours.
Nine hours, yeah. Uh, and so I think in this meeting on the fifth, I think you get eight hours, if I'm not mistaken. So, you know, we do about five, six of these and then, you know, we're, we're moving forward. Continue to train, continue to get better, continue to, to demonstrate, you know, we're professional purpose supporters as a board. And so we'll be, uh, or I'll be reaching out, uh, if we want to meet more formally to talk about some things. The other boards are working on policies and things like that. We haven't had any issues. We still have adopted, uh, kind of a procedure as it relates to public speakers. Uh, we haven't had any public speakers, but we have a procedure in place, um, in, in preparation for that time, uh, if it, if it ever arises. So that's what I would have to say about governance.
Thank you.
All right, PPC?
Can you hear me? Good evening.
Good evening.
Hope everybody's doing well. Glad to be back in, uh, school and session and all of that good stuff. I think we're all pretty good. Uh, just a few things, um, regarding PPC. We have certified as completed our elections. And, uh, before I introduce those PPC, uh, members for this twenty-four, twenty-five school year, I do want to just remind you guys of the process of how, uh, voting. I do wanna just remind you guys of the process of how, uh, voting and things of that nature went under, uh, went underway. Uh, on August twelfth, uh, we conducted week-long nominations that happened at the campus level. So, building teachers were instructed to nominate the amount of individuals, however, how many seats that they had. So if you had two seats, enough people, uh, for, uh, to serve on PPC. At the conclusion of that week-long nomination process, last week, we conducted week-long voting, which concluded on Friday at noon. And so these individuals that I will name off, those that are here, so I meant to leave, are the twenty-four, twenty-five Certified Personnel Policy Committee members and the school that they will represent. And I'm gonna ask them to stay until I call their names. Uh, for Greenville, Forest Park, we have Ms. Tomicas Smith. No, she's here. Southwood, we have Ms. Elizabeth Walls and Ms. Lisa Sanders. For Pondville Junior High, we have Mr. Adrian Duncan and Ms. Christina Berry. For Pondville Junior High Academy, we have Ms. Kendra Jones. Uh, for Thirty-Fourth Elementary, we have Ms. Crystal Sweeney and Ms. Stephanie Owens. For Broadmoor Elementary, we have Ms. Marcia Wilkins and Ms. Candice Sanders, who just recently had to leave out. Uh, and for James Matthews, we have Matthew Jimson and Ms. Kiara Barnes. There was a slight change, uh, with the, the person that did actually win the seat, and so we went down to the next person based on the votes, which was Ms. Kiara Barnes in place of Ms. Carmen Pell. And then for Pondville High School, you have myself, uh, Mr. Thomas, Calvin Thomas, and Ms. Alicia Purple Smith. And that is the committee meeting. That's the committee for twenty-four, twenty-five. And of course, uh, we will have our first official meeting on September the ninth at four-thirty. And at that meeting, we will, uh, do, uh, committee elections for the chair and secretary, that type of thing. And we'll proceed with our order of business from that point. And I have spoken with Classified as well, they are in the process of getting their ears underway as well. It's a little more complex, because they have more departments and things of that nature to be able to touch it. So they'll be getting their ears underway as well. The good thing is, while being on the year-round, we are way early, because you don't have to have it formed until October fifteen. So that allows us to be settled and to get to work on it a lot faster. And then on next week, we come back, I'll be meeting with Michelle to, uh, to make sure that we have whatever policies, uh, to kind of get her feet wet on all those things, to make sure she has access to what she needs, to make sure we can have those things uploaded, uh, in a timely fashion. That's all.
Thank you. Any questions for PPC, board members? All right, thank you. All right, we're now at the superintendent's report.
As a reminder, on our report, um, our focus is our students, and it focuses around the six systems. And so I just wanna give a quick report on a few of our six systems. Um, in academics, and I may need help with that, but I'm gonna skip real quick, I'm gonna skip those things that are the reports, because I'm allowed to people to talk first. But I will say, as far as facilities and transportation, we had the update on the Pondville High Campus. We talked about the football parking and, um, and the changes that may be made there. And one other item that's on your agenda tonight would be the sale of the three buildings. We had offers, we had offers on our three buildings that are for sale. Um, but I do wanna say, and I didn't ask him to come to the board meeting, but I want you guys to know that, and I wanna celebrate this, and we'll have him here next month for sure, but, um, Mr. Carl Stewart, our Mr. Honorable, is a hero. I'm sorry, Carl Smith, Carl Stewart, I'm sorry, Mr. Carl Smith. Um, but there was an incident involved, uh, with our bus yesterday, and he acted as, um, his strength to do and was able to get the fire extinguisher off the bus and put out the fire. And it was, it was life-changing for the other person involved. We had no students on the bus, um, he was the only person on the bus, so luckily, we were, we were very fortunate as a district. Um, and I just wanna say, for facilities and transportation, Mr. Kalen Davis has been fielding a lot of calls from reporters and taking that and helping and taking care, and so we're just very, very proud for him to be a member of our Pondville District family, and we're thankful. Um, so, to academics, I do want, if you don't mind, just to click on that first link, Mr. Sims, that's our, um, I just wanted to give a quick update for our K-two assessments. Uh, we have beginning of year assessments, and now this is going to be for every grade level, but right now, I just wanted to kind of share again with our K-two data. Um, Ms. Rawls is collecting the data from the teachers as well, this is something that they're working on. And the beginning of the year, we had twenty-three percent of our students that knew all letters and sounds. Um, we have first graders eighty-two percent, second graders ninety-two percent. We tested ninety-seven percent. Again, this is still trying to make sure all the students are present, um, they're on our roll. Um, if you scroll down, if you don't mind, that's uppercase, we have lowercase. Again, very pleased with our numbers, with assessments. But again, the one that I wanna look at the most is our letter sounds. Uh, beginning of year, we have, and I want you to, I wanna bring your attention to this so that we can make sure we're keeping up with this each, each beginning, middle, and end. Right now, kindergarten, we had five percent of our students coming knowing all of their letter sounds. First grade was at eighty-two. When we left kindergarten last year, we were at ninety percent. And so the concern is, though, it's not a concern, but the difference is, is the difference in the number of students. We had more students leave kindergarten than we do have coming to school in first grade right now. Our numbers are down a little bit in first grade. So, uh, we don't know if that's the lack of certain students that might have caused that as well, but that's the beginning of year assessment data for our K-two. And letters, sounds, and uppercase, lowercase. Any questions about that one? Please, yes.
Curious, I know that we have, I know we have our pre-K program. Um, how many of this, this five percent all came from pre-K, or do we know what our capacity is for pre-K to help to increase our numbers?
I'll have the numbers for you of exactly how many kindergartners we had that came from our pre-K. I don't have that tonight, but I'll make sure I get that to you guys, because that is something that we do pay attention to. Um, and I know that, uh, we don't always retain our pre-K students, many of them do go somewhere else. Um, and so, that's something that we have talked about with these peoples, and we're looking at a plan on how we can continue to retain those pre-K students, but I'll make sure we get those numbers for you. Thank you. Will you go to the next? This is our assessment schedule, just so that you know, um, what our teachers and what our, um, our students are doing. Is there anyone can make it a little bit bigger, because I can barely see it? Thanks. So, just so you know, um, there's the new legislation that says all kindergarten through third-grade students in the state of Arkansas will receive the same screener for dyslexia. And so it's through the Atlas, uh, platform, and now, um, it's not ready yet for us to use. Um, the original date for this date was to put out so that we could start using it August nineteenth for the screeners, and now it's gonna be August twenty-third. Has that changed anymore, Ms. Lee?
The window is tomorrow.
It is, oh, that's tomorrow, that's right, because tomorrow is the twenty-eight. Eight, it was August twenty-eighth, so tomorrow is the twenty-eighth. So we can start doing assessment tomorrow. But, um, originally, we were hoping to do it on the nineteenth, and they backed it up a little bit. Now, we won't have the results from that, though, until October. Like, October fourteenth is when they're gonna release the scores to us, how the students perform on that in K-three. So in efforts to ensure that we are meeting the needs of all students, we're going forward with our local assessments to look for those students that are at risk and trying to make sure that we have interventions in place, because we can't wait till October for the assessed results to come back. Um, so you'll see that we are providing these assessments in all grade levels. That's just kindergarten and how that assessment schedule rolls. If you don't mind, just kind of scrolling up, we'll go through it. Um, first grade, we have those assessments, and we do it for beginning, middle, and end of year. And then, as you keep going through the secondary school, the upper elementary and secondary schools, those assessment timelines are on there as well. And so I just wanted to let you know that that's in your packet, and I'll make sure, I'll make sure that's in your packet so you can go back and look at that as well, as far as when we're providing those. Um, under human capital, something I was very excited about and wanted to share was that, um, you currently have seventy-six point seven percent of our educators fully licensed for the subject that they're teaching, which is a huge improvement over the years. So, kudos to our staff. Those that are not fully certified are in pathways. Uh, Ms. Mike McMurray has worked very diligently with our building principals to make sure that we're, we're making sure everyone's in a pathway to become certified. One of our questions was, how many have we had, um, certified over the last year? And so I'll give that number, that just came, came up this afternoon, but I think I'll report on that next month, uh, on the exact ones that were in a pathway that we were able to get certified. Um, as far as the openings that we still have, of course, we have special education openings, um, that's very hard to fill. Uh, and then, we're still seeking an elementary music teacher and a middle school art teacher.
I wanna make a quick comment about that. Dr. Director Corbin and I were talking about that and the potential role of UAPB. Regarding that, in terms of getting, um, teachers get certified to work in the district, do you have any additional comments about that, any, any updates?
Well, I'm an update that I have with the N A T program, the math program we have on campus, we will help the teachers be certified. So, um, they can reach out to Dr. Daley and the school of education.
And we partner with them very well, so that's good, so thank you. And I know, um, another thing that y'all are doing is the practice support and things like that as well. They have classes that you have to be sponsoring. We also have many teachers in each of our campuses as the lead teacher position. That's something that we talked about, um, in the grade levels and the, and the content area. These teachers will be going through an intensive training, um, for the, throughout the school year, to become those lead teachers and coaches. And so we're still growing our teachers to the best that we can, and we're excited about that. That's a designation that can be placed on their license after they finish that designation, or after they finish that training. As far as stakeholder and community involvement, a reminder to everyone that we are having our Labor Day break this week. Our students are out, our students and teachers are out this Thursday and Friday. Um, of course, Monday's Labor Day, and then our students and teachers are out Tuesday and Wednesday as well. And so we have the Labor Day break, the Labor Day break is over the weekend. And then, I put a link, if you don't mind clicking on that link for our stakeholder community engagement. This, starting, uh, the month of September, the second week in September, we have our leader readers, and this is where we're asking leaders across the community to, um, to volunteer to come read to our students. It's going to be the second week of every month, but we're gonna kick it off in September. And so there is a QR code there, those that are at the, at the meeting, if you're interested, you can scan the QR code and come read to our students. Uh, board members, I would really much love it if you had an opportunity, uh, I'll make sure, Ms. West will make sure that you can get signed up so you can come read. And it can be, again, it's the second week in any month, so if you couldn't do it in September, we could do it any month afterwards. But of course, you're welcome to come read anytime, just let us know if you wanna do so. I said, sign me up. Um, Ms. West, how do you schedule it with the class, when they go to, when the leader readers?
So the building principal and the parent facilitator does the schedule. We send them the people who have signed up for that particular building, and if they chose AM or PM, then the parent facilitator and principal will assign a classroom.
But maybe you'd like to read to your child's classroom, you just need to reach out to your building principal.
I always heard, when it comes to, uh, like you said, that you get signed up, so, so when you get signed up to read and they put us to a particular class, what about the other classes?
They don't get read to at that time.
So you come back the next month.
We need more.
Yeah.
How long does it take to read?
Well, I mean, if you, I mean, if you're only, they wanna go to the next class, that might be something they could do.
Good.
Oh, yeah, it's up to the building principal besides. The parent facilitating, the building principal, they'll, they'll sign, yeah. I'm sure they'll make sure all the classrooms get touched.
That's right.
I said, if you wanna read to all the sixth grade classes, okay.
I'd love the whole school?
Yes, I think I hear a challenge, I think you can read to every classroom. Yes, I've done that before, it's fine.
Question?
Yes, I just wanted to know, I guess, is this a designated time? I mean, I know they have instructional time, I just wanted to know how it's coordinated with that.
And that's why we do it just that second week, so they can designate that time. The second week of the month is when we'll do it, so that they can schedule that time, so it would not interrupt other instructions. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Sims. Um, as far as, I talked about facilities and district operations, just a reminder that, um, I wanted to commend the board. We had a very good two-hour session where we did our training over communicating and our personalities and different things like that, and I thought it was a very eye-opening experience for me as a superintendent to do that with the board, and so I thought that was very positive, so thank you for that. Um, and, uh, as far as governance, we're looking at policies, Section Seven tonight, that's on, that's on the board agenda. That was, I already shared. And that's my update.
All right, thank you very much. I guess now we gotta move on to new business?
Oh, I missed one thing, sorry, sorry. Under student support, I need to, I wanted to report to you the student transfers. Um, and I put that, I put that on the board for, I forgot. So, remember last month, we passed a resolution, because the transfers that come in, you don't want a kid to have to wait till the next board meeting, and that was something that, um, that the, that was recommended. So we had, um, we had five transfer, five students transferred to England School District, three students to Cleveland County, three students to Stuttgart, two students to Star City, one to Woodlawn, and two to Watson Chapel. And all of them, when asked as to why, several of them were because they lived closer. So that was the England and the Stuttgart, they lived closer that way, is what I was saying when we asked the parent, because that was something that Ms. Edwards had requested. The ones that are going to, um, yes, Cleveland County, England, and Stuttgart. Star City, they lived close down that highway, and they had already been in the district before, and they wanted to stay in their district. Um, and then, Woodlawn, that was a new entering student that lived out that close way. And I, Watson Chapel, they were, they were moving because of friends. That's, that's what the parent explained to them. And Ms. Hadley tried to work with them in every way possible to get them to stay. Uh, we met with her parent and everything, so that's good about having Ms. Hadley to help with that. Um, and the other thing that I wanted to share with you was our ticket sales for athletic events. Uh, we're going to paperless, so it will be online ticket sales to buy the events. It's something that we did when we had our, when we hosted the state tournament and things like that, and when we go to places, they're online. I will say, our ticket prices are not going up, we still charge that same ticket price. However, using that site does have a cost, and so it's a, it'll be a dollar fee for those that buy a ticket online, but it's something that, as part of that. Um, at this time, we discussed, the district did not need to accrue that cost, so it would be at the cost of the patron buying the ticket. All right, and that is all of my thanks for giving, thanks. All right, so on the new business, yes. The first item that is on the agenda is to adopt the proposed budget with tax levy and approve the sample ballot. This is a formality. Uh, I know Ms. Slatche mentioned it as part of, went over as part of the finance committee, but there's a specific resolution that has to be set, because this has to go in the newspaper before the election.
All right, I'm gonna read the suggestion motion to adopt the attached proposed budget of expenditures with tax levy for fiscal year beginning July one, twenty-twenty-five, two, and including June thirty-eighth, twenty-twenty-six, and to approve the related sample ballot. I'd like to entertain a motion, entertain a motion to approve that statement. The moving property segment, ready for questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have.
In your packet, you'll see Section Seven, um, so, or, I mean, policy, all the policies for Section Seven, forgive me. It's like item eleven B. You'll see the red indications, but this is with the changes. Um, we're going to ask that you approve the policies in the packet, all except seven point five. We're gonna pull seven point five out.
All right, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve all the section, all of Section Seven except... All right, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve all the sec-, all of section seven except seven point five. The move is proper, second, ready for question? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have it.
Dr. Rice, I forgot something. I've asked Mr. Scott to come talk about student support for capturing kids' hearts, and he has a presentation, and we have people here talking about it. I completely forgot. Forgive me.
No problem.
All right, while we pause, just step back.
Is that okay? Thank you. I just saw him sitting. I'm so sorry. So another part of student support is our efforts with capturing kids' hearts, and we talked about it earlier when we were doing our good things for everyone. And so Mr. Scott, our new building principal for Broadmore, welcome, thank you. And he had a parent night, and I'd like for him to talk to you guys about his parent night and then, and what they're seeing right now at Broadmore Elementary regarding capturing kids' hearts. And please forgive me.
No problem. Good evening, I am Tepidus Scott, proud principal of Broadmore Elementary. We did just have our first parent night on August twentieth. The goal of our parent night is to let the parents know what we're doing at school and how they can support at home. We want to be very transparent with our parents and how we can get them enrolled. And the morning meeting and the capturing kids' heart is a really, really important part of our day to get our scholars' day started. So we wanted the parents to actually go through that process to kind of see what we're doing and why it's important for these scholars to be at school all the time. So once again, the purpose is to model instruction, instructional strategies of what the scholars are learning at school and how the parent can support at home. We want the parents to be able to support their scholars with the homework, but also behavior and those socio-emotional components that help them succeed on a day-to-day basis. And what is the capturing kids' heart? It's a teaching and learning program that helps educators build relationships with students to create high-achieving learning environments. The program uses experiential training, coaching, and character-based curriculum to focus on socio-emotional well-being, student connectivity, and a relationship-driven campus culture. And one thing that we asked the parents was, do they remember their favorite teacher? And a lot of them said they did. And we talked about those feel-good things that made them remember those teachers. One of my favorite teachers was Mr. Lotte. He was my father figure away from home. I still have my father's living, and I still have that connection with my family, but Mr. Lotte was their father away from, from home. We was at school practicing every day, and he was there, and that was that person that I could actually go talk to anytime I needed someone. The goal, to capture students' hearts, just like it says, and to capture their, their minds. One thing that we did talk to the teachers about this summer was implicit bias, making sure that they don't have a bias towards kids just based off what they may have heard in the past. But also, we want them to be able to empower our scholars to have relationships with them. And with this capturing kids' heart program, it did open up some emotions for the staff. It was a really good path for a movement experience that I would say was a healing process for, for some teachers, just to hear their professional traumas or even personal traumas. And it was good to allow them to speak about those things and how they wanted to move forward in their career. Projected outcomes, strengthen student connectivity to others by enhancing healthy bonds with teachers, implementing consistent rules of conduct, our stripes matrix, talking to our scholars about earning their stripes, and how those behaviors should look inside the classroom, outside the classroom. I'll just go down a little bit, but increase teacher satisfaction and increasing teacher retention and improving in teacher recruitment. I know sometimes teachers don't know how to cope or handle behaviors, but this is a program that really helps them build relationships with the scholars, but also is empowering the students to not be afraid to talk to their teachers. But one thing we're talking to the teachers about is being authentic in their approach, but actually showing that they genuinely care. We want school to be that place, that safe haven for anytime the scholars are coming to school, that they feel really, really, really good about being there. And also their growth, we want them to grow to be proficient, but we know you got to crawl where you are. So we really want them to grow in everything that they're doing. And the last slide was what's next and how will we move our scholars? Intensive intervention cater to student needs, that's their win time, their what I need time. We have some B O I assessment data now, so we kind of know how we want to group our students and how we want to move forward. Increase instructional minutes, trying to find ways to continue to maximize learning on a day-to-day basis without, without, without a lot of disruptions or interruptions. Small group instruction, using that win time, but also teachers differentiating their instruction and making the students be facilitators of the learner, the learning, instead of the teachers being lecturers the entire time while they're learning. Continue to be transparent, being open with the parents, but also letting the parents know what the scholars are doing. But our next parent night will focus on ninety-five percent in benchmark, so we want to teach those parents strategies of what we're doing at school and how they can support the scholars at home. So each week at Broadmore now, the expectation is we send a newsletter home. We've been doing this since the beginning of the school year. It goes home on Monday, homework goes home on Monday, it's returned on Friday. So we have a reading log in there, but we have a technology log. So we're trying to increase instructional time, but also allow the parents to be able to support the students and actually help them with their work. Not making excuses, but making progress. That's really big, big for me. Like I told the teachers, what's in the past is in the past, we got to move forward. Let's not point the finger, point blaming anyone, we really want to move forward. And not opting out of teaching and learning. Every day that the teachers come, we want them to be their best, and like I tell the teachers, you're at your best. Our students are at your best when you're at your best, so we really want them to do those things. And those were just our breakout sessions, so each grade level collaborative, the collaborative teams, they went through a routine and told the teachers basically what we're doing at school, the parents, what we're doing at school and how they can support at home. That was our scan for our class, dojo just to connect our parents for another source to let them know what we're doing, but also for them to get updates. I'm sure they used to be sending messages on school status, but this is another way that we're connecting to also show behaviors with. Just announcements, and thank you.
Any questions for, any questions from here? Question, board members, questions? Thank you for very inspiring report.
Okay, great, no, no questions. There's more coming. So I regret to report, but I had the opportunity to also go through the training. What was going to be about ten, fifteen minutes of going in just to make sure everybody was good, I ended up staying. I did both days, and I will say that there was healing that took place. It was a great experience, great experience. And I can speak on this for hours, but I know we got to get out of here. So what I will say is it's something that I hope that we can continue to use moving forward. I've had an opportunity to visit a few of the schools. My plan is to be more familiar face in all of the schools this year and, and not be more in one than the other. That's, that's a goal that I, I plan on, so you will see. But the few schools that I have attended, I do see a difference in the environment from greeting people as they come in, the smiling faces. So that's why I just say that there was, there was true illness, that, a healing that took place. And I'm grateful to have been a part of the experience with you. Like I said, I went in with my board member badge on the first day, just so that I can come and make sure that everybody was good and show my face. But before it was all said and done, I took the board member badge off, because I wasn't a board member anymore. I was with everybody else, and I was going through that training with everybody. So I'm glad that I did stop by, and I'm glad that I stayed. It was a great experience.
Were you there, what was your adjective?
My adjective is romantic brick.
Romantic. That's good, thank you. Mr. Scott, please again, forgive me, I'm sorry, but thank you so much for your presentation. Anyone else? So thank you so much. And Mr. Whitmore, so you know, and so the board knows, as far as capturing kids' heart goes, it's not just that two-day training. So now what we have is, we have monthly meetings with what they call the pro-, well, we have training called, they're training the process champions. And so the building principals and teachers in their building will be labeled those process champions, and so they're the ones that will give monthly training to continue to look for and encourage and make sure we're doing those things throughout the building and, and giving feedback on that so that we can continue this process. We have district-level quarterly meetings with the head, the, the head person that meets with myself and Mr. Carlock, so that we're making sure that we're supporting the building principals and getting this, so it's not just a one-and-done, it's a continued process because we're trying to change that piece. Thank you.
All right, no problem, move back into, to new business. Approval of the sale of Oak Park Elementary, Indiana Street Elementary, and the downtown administration building.
So we received, and we did discuss this in our facilities committee, but I wanted to just share with the entire board because not everyone was in that committee. We received three offers for Oak Park, three offers for Indiana Street, and two offers for the downtown building. We went with the highest offer for each of those. And so that is in your packet. Do you want to do them, and I think you should probably do individual.
All right, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the sale of Oak Park Elementary.
So, second.
The move is proper, second, ready for question? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have it. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the purchase of Indiana Street Elementary. The move is proper, second, ready for question? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have it. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the downtown administration building. The move is proper, second, ready for question? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have it.
So at this time, if anything doesn't go forward, I will bring it back to you. If, if anything doesn't work out as it should with the agreements, but I want to make sure that we have permission to sell. The next item is we are partnering with Arkansas River Educational Cooperative to provide special education services to our students. At this time, they could, and it would be virtual, but it is a virtual teacher that can provide those minutes that certified in special education for those classrooms. We're using it at the secondary level. At this time, it would be resource, resource in certain classes and some self-contained minutes. But the way that this works is we still have to have a facilitator with the students, like a paraprofessional, or, or the teacher will be with them as they receive their virtual learning through the, through the computer. It's not ideal, but it is something that we have that is providing a certified teacher. If not, right now, what we have are long-term subs in the classroom. And this is for three, three teachers.
All right, this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the A R E S C Virtual Special Education Teachers M O U. Move proper, second, ready for question?
I do have a question, and please refresh my memory. But I hope last month, we approved the contract teachers for special ed?
Yes, so we use stepping stones as a contract as well, and they can provide an onsite teacher. But at this time, this is a method that, and, and the ones that we're using stepping stones for are those students that are of a little bit more severe need, that so they, they require more of a service, so they're in the classroom longer. These services are more of the just individual type intervention, certain amount of minutes. And so stepping stones, we use that company to provide, right now, we're using it to provide two classes for that. But this is three teachers at a cost of a hundred eighty thousand dollars, so it's still cheaper than what we can do through stepping stones as well.
How much was a stepping stone?
Sixty-seven dollars an hour for the teacher. Which is what we pay that company, I'm not saying that's what that teacher makes, that's through the vendor.
And will this be the students who go through the virtual program, like he assessed if this is a effective learning method for them? Or is it, I mean, how will we differentiate between who goes into the, who has an onsite teacher and who uses a virtual?
Right now, it's based on schedules and where we need, where we didn't have the teachers. So it, right now, it's based on the student's schedule and the fact that we could make this type of learning work for those students. If we could get an onsite teacher, that's what we would want to do. I mean, like, hire a teacher, that's what we would prefer. As far as determining if they're successful in this, the success is that they're right now being provided their services. We hope that they're going to be successful for sure.
Any other questions, discussion? All right, the motion has been moved properly, second, ready to vote? All in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have it.
The next, also, the next purchase service also involves special education. We used this, a person last year to support with conferences and different opportunities for students. This person is not providing instructional services, but we utilized her last year, it did not go over the threshold, but in case it did, I wanted to make sure I brought it to your attention because we did have an M O U for her. So she, since we do have so many students, or I want to say, we have so many teachers that are not certified in special ed, and we have some long-term subs in those places, and we have students that are receiving services, we need to make sure that their conferences are held accurately, that the paperwork is done accurately, and that we're supporting those teachers. So she provides that support for those subs and making sure that we have accurate lessons and that we can get all their I T minutes met and all their paperwork done and get their, and she helps those conferences as well for the teachers that are not certified.
All right, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of purchase services for special education conferences and support. The move is proper, second, ready for question?
I do have a question. So would this be classified as a professional service? And in terms of our procurement requirements for professional services, would we at least, you know, ask if they were taking a tip to get some other quotes or qualifications or other individuals as well or not? I don't know this person.
It's not really professional, I see what you're saying, professional service would qualify like lawyer, armitage, those things. She's a purchase service, which is a, she's a former special educator that has a special education license, so we're just doing, using her as a purchase service to provide those things. So she meets the qualifications of what we would need to hold conferences.
Okay, I was just making sure that we had covered any kind of procurement requirements related to a contract that we were having with the.
And it's just a memorandum of understanding, we're not contracting her.
All right, any other questions, comments, concerns?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is she here every day?
Only certain times, but she fills out a time sheet, and we do it that way. So most days, she comes in, I see her, she'll pop in, I'll see her campuses when she has certain conferences or when she's meeting with certain ones. I can give you a good schedule, but she's not here every day.
All right, any other questions? All right, you're ready to vote, all in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have it, thank you.
And the purchases, do you want me to go over each one? These, do you want to do them individually? Okay, all right. So the school status is our communication platform that we use. Mr. Scott actually mentioned it earlier when he was talking about how we communicate. It's the message that we send out, and it's a way, it's a platform that we can do that, and we're able to read it and keep data on how many people it reaches and things like that. And so that's a renewal for school status. We pay for that out of our federal funds because it's a communication tool. Ninety-five percent group professional development. We have brought down those professional development days, but we still have several teachers that are new to the district, so that's a professional development contract. So that we're specifically targeting those teams. So that's a professional development contract, um, so that we're specifically, uh, targeting those teachers that, at the elementary level with, uh, ninety-five percent group, it's not for secondary.
And so this quantity is number of days?
Yes, yes. Thank you. We had more than that in the past, now I think we've brought it down, um, quite a bit, but we still wanna make sure we're providing that sort of, that support for the teachers for their curriculum.
And all these days, this is for, I think, all of the teachers for that day, or is it certain schools or?
Ms. Ross?
So it's, uh, certain schools and all of the teachers, they come through their CTMs, uh, the field, they're scheduled with the building principal, but teachers need one-on-one, a perceived training, so the schedule for each building.
So there, I just wanna know how many people are typically served in a day?
It would, in a day, the, the coach has access to all of the teachers.
So it would be, it, it, the elementary schools would be the expensive. Cause we use ninety-five perc- percent group in all grade levels of the elementary.
Okay, well, I was just thinking of, you know, maximizing our investment here because, you know, fifty, two hundred dollars a day, I'd like to see us be able to get as many teachers as possible serve, or scheduled to serve on the day we need.
And there's been times where, the good thing is, is we have used this company in the past, so there are times that if there's an issue, we can reschedule that day. If there's too many teachers out, or if they're not available, that's something that we can work on. You're welcome. The next set of ninety-five percent group curriculum, that's an additional, that's the additional consumables for our curriculum that we have, we're, we're using, uh, we're gonna purchase another set, so we have that extra. Um, the next thing on, uh, which is item D, the Just Write Readers. This was a, a product of decodable text that we can utilize across the campus that'll be in all classroom libraries, and it'd also be available for, uh, to send home with students as well. The Rex Academy is the curriculum that is used for our twenty-one CCLC program. Last year, we spent more on that because we actually had, um, we had more train to it. Now this is just the online platform, and it has to do with STEM-related activities and things like that. Progress Learning, uh, went back and we requested a two-year quote for Progress Learning. This is our platform that we use to create our, um, classroom, uh, formative assessments and our district formative assessments, it's part of our intervention. And so we're asking for a two-year quote because we can use our ARPSR money to purchase this, and we know that our ARPSR money, um, has to be extended by September third, well, it has to be obligated by September thirtieth of this year. It has to be liquidated by Ju- January of twenty-five. So that's another reason why we, we like the platform, and we're gonna go ahead and try to get two years of it. Um, we have, uh, a Chromebook replacement, uh, fifteen hundred Chromebooks that will be, uh, replace the ones that have been lost, broken, or not returned from the different types of virtual learning when we had students taking them home. We also are going to make it to where we can replace Chromebooks in the future. The next one, that are the Chrome cards to hold those Chromebooks. And what you see after that are the Microsoft Surfaces. These are, um, instructional devices for, uh, building leaders when they're doing their academic walkthroughs and, and in order to do their focus walks and things like that. Um, and then we also are, uh, purchasing a desktop learning lab, uh, at our secondary school.
Alright, uh, you have any more?
I don't.
Okay. Alright, if it's okay with board members, I'm gonna ask for, uh, a broad approval of items APJ. I'll read those individually, um, uh, through motion. So at this time, I'd ask, uh, for motion to approve the purchase of school status, ninety-five percent group professional development, ninety-five percent curriculum resources, Just Write Readers, Rex Academy, twenty-one CCLC curriculum, Progress Learning, Chromebooks, Chromebook cards, Microsoft Surfaces, and Desktop Learning Lab. The move is probably second, are any questions?
I do have a question. Um, the, you mentioned the source of funds for A and some of the others, is the rest of it all?
It is, it's all ARPSR.
And, um, some of the items that will be added to our fixed asset inventory, um, do we have all of the places that we're gonna store some of the stuff already, or we're still working to do that as well?
I think we have the stor- storage for our, all of our, um, Chromebooks. Yes, because it'll be at the campuses, and then the rest, the classroom sets, yes.
Okay, so each of the labs that we're planning to establish with some of the computers are already designated, set up, just ready for a computer?
And so, the, some of these, um, hang on, you asked someone else that I was gonna address.
The storage?
Oh, no, they're all coming out of ARPSR. I said that, okay.
Alright, any more questions, comments, concerns? Ready to vote, all in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have it, thank you.
The next item I asked for the board is an adjustment. Um, we originally, um, gave a testing coordinator stipend on the salary schedule at two thousand dollars. That was what was in the past. Um, and it has been very difficult to obtain a building testing coordinator because of the things that they have to do. Um, Ms. Lee, since we had meetings and we talked about this, um, there's a lot of responsibilities in regards to being the building testing coordinator that they can't do during the day, that they have to do after hours. And so I'm asking that we adjust that stipend from two thousand dollars to four thousand dollars for the building testing coordinator.
Alright, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to raise the building testing coordinator stipend from two thousand to four thousand. Move to private second, ready for question?
Yes, um, so this is also, is this gonna operate again, or is this something?
No, we take that out of ESA, it's not required to have it, oh, well, we could still take it out of ESA. We have to have a district level, and you have to have building level testing coordinators, but we can pay for that out of ESA. That's where we, that's where we take it out right now.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Alright, hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have it, thank you. Alright, at this time, we have a need to go into executive session, uh, to discuss and send this assessment to those personnel. So I wanna thank the community for attending, and we will be staying in this room. So we're gonna politely ask you to exit. Yes, uh, we're also gonna take a small break, this time, you're up, sir.
Wait next, follow the next.
Yes.